Good afternoon, good evening. This is called a word for the Natrona County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on April 12th.
Mr. Chairman, can we have you turn on your microphone? Thank you.
Call the order. That sounds better. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so I'd like to introduce the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff here this evening. My name's Hal Hutchinson. I'm the chair. To my left is Chad Zeal, Planning and Zoning Commission member. To my immediate right is Robert Grant, Planning and Zoning Commissioner. Starting at the end of the table is Lori Hall, Planning and Zoning Staff, Holly Wilhelm, Associate Planner, Megan Nelms, Senior Planner, and Deputy County Attorney Charmaine Reed. So, you also know this commission is an advisory board for the Natrona County Commissioners. Our decisions are subject to approval, conditional approval, denial, or modification by the Board of County Commissioners. For each application on the agenda, we will hold an official public hearing. The hearings are recorded and there will be written minutes of this meeting. After the commission holds a public hearing, unless an application is tabled or withdrawn, the Board of County Commissioners will hold another public hearing for the application. Tonight, everyone will have an opportunity to address the commission. First, those in favor of the commission may address the commission. Then, those opposed to the application may address the commission. Finally, the applicant may give a brief rebuttal. When the chair recognizes you, please come up to the podium and clearly state your name and address before giving your comments. And you should know that this is not a forum for public outcry or speaking from the audience. You must be recognized by the chair before addressing the commission. And if a person's conduct is out of order, the chair may give the person a warning. If the person continues to conduct, continues the conduct, or if conduct is extremely out of order, the person may be directed to leave immediately. So, thank you all for enduring that. The first item on our agenda, actually the third, number three on the agenda, is approval of the March 8, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes. Chair would entertain a motion.
I move to accept the minutes as written.
We have a motion and a second to approve the March 8, 2022 meeting minutes as prepared. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. None opposed? The minutes are approved. I will sign those and get those to you later. Alright, the first item on our consideration of the actual planning and zoning issues is zone change 22-001. And that's a request to rezone proposed Lot 2 Canal Ridge Simple Subdivision from Ram Ranching Agriculture and Mining to Commercial. Megan, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a short overview and some planning considerations for you. Again, it's case number ZC 22-01. An application for rezoning of the proposed Lot 2 Canal Ridge Simple Subdivision. The applicants are Lori McCardle and Alan Patton, and they're proposing to rezone proposed Lot 2 of Canal Ridge Simple Subdivision from Ram Ranching Ag and Mining to C Commercial District for the purposes of future development. This property is located on the south side of State Highway 220, just west of the intersection of Cortez Road. I don't think I said that right. The lot, the current lot size is 12 acres and the minimum lot size for a commercial district is two acres. The parcel is currently vacant. And it is surrounded by vacant grasslands, which are also zoned Ram, as well as the Windy Waters RV Mobile Home and Mobile Home Park, which is zoned Commercial. The following, staff has the following planning considerations and comments to offer. This rezoning request is in line with the goals of the current Natrona County Development Plan. The parcel falls within the Alcova Pathfinder neighborhood of rural planning areas. The recommendations from the development plan for this neighborhood area include ranching and recreation and zoning of Ram and some Commercial. Adjacent to the subject parcel are other commercially zoned parcels. And the subject property is also in the Commercial Center/Hub of Alcova and with further goals of encouraging development in the Alcova area. Per Chapter 10, Section 1C of the county zoning resolution, this zone change meets the following. The land or its surrounding environs has changed or is changing to such a degree that it is in the public interest to encourage redevelopment of the area or to recognize the changing character of the area or and/or the proposed rezoning is necessary in order to provide land for a community need that was not anticipated at the time of adoption of the Natrona County Development Plan. Staff has no planning considerations. However, all future development would be subject to the C Commercial Zoning District requirements and any future division of the property would be subject to all county subdivision regulations. And with that, staff recommends approval of the rezoning request pending the filing of the simple subdivision. And I can answer any questions and the applicant is in the audience.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions for staff on the, on the application? I guess I have one, Megan. Vaguely, it's recalled that there was an application for this same site years ago.
I have heard that, Mr. Chairman.
Are you, are you, you're aware of that?
I am aware of that application.
Do you happen to know what, what the issues were at the time and what's changed?
I, I think I watched the meeting from a few years ago and read the staff report. I think part of the issue may have been people felt like the applicant in that case was out of town coming in. They're proposing to subdivide it into four lots. And they maybe hadn't done the due diligence that they needed to do. I think the applicants in this case, you know, they live across the road from this parcel. They've already been in contact with YDOT and have an engineer retained out of Cody that's going to complete the traffic study for them when they are ready to develop this parcel. The rezoning application and the subdivision is kind of the precursor to all the development that's going to occur on the property. When they're ready to build something or they have someone interested in developing the property, that'll be the time when, you know, they'll submit for their building permits and will have all the development standards they need to meet. They'll have to do that traffic study and get their approach approved from YDOT. And all of those other standards that they're required to meet. At this point, when we don't know exactly what type of use they're going to put out there, you know, YDOT's not going to give them an approach permit right now because we don't know what's going to go there. So, this is kind of a precursor in setting them up for putting some type of development on the property. And so, I think that's, that's the differences I guess I've seen from watching the previous meeting and that, reading that application and, and working with Ms. McCardle on this application.
So, I take it the emphasis tonight is just considered the zone change is all we have before us tonight?
Correct.
Okay, anything else before the public hearing? I guess first, before we have the public hearing, could we have the applicant come forward and maybe give us your information on the application, please?
Can I just come up here?
Yep, right to the podium. And state your name. For the record, please.
Okay. Lori McCardle.
Is it Lauren?
Lori.
Lori.
Yeah.
And your address, please.
It's a P.O. Box 130 in Alcova.
Okay.
And, yeah, we have, have a larger piece of property, which we split into two with a simple subdivision. And we're now looking to take this 12 acres and rezone it from Ram to Commercial. It doesn't change too much, except that it does make this piece of property legal because it 12 acres is not the right size for, I mean, it can't be Ram at 12 acres. The uses probably won't change too much. You know, when you look at the use of, of Ram versus the use of Commercial, there's not a lot of difference, except there's more opportunity for retail development on the commercial site than there is with the, with the Ram. Topographically, too, it, the piece of property that we have is very different. What we left is Ram, is very hilly and rugged and just great place to put a cabin, which we're in the process of doing now. But the other is kind of a flatter piece, right up against the campground, close to Sloan's, where it would just be ideal to have more of a, a center of activity for Alcova if it gets to the point where more uses are needed in Alcova. I mean, it's just perfect for that. And Alcova, right now, just doesn't have a gathering spot, aside from Sloan's and, and the Sunset Grill. So, it would be nice to have like a community feel in Alcova, and this place would be perfect for it. So, that was kind of the intent, is this piece of property that's topographically separate from, you know, the other piece. It would be really nice to have it available for some future development.
Okay.
So.
Any questions for Ms. McCardle? Thank you. You might want to hang out there just a moment. I'll get the public hearing started and you can speak in favor, I would suspect. So, with that, call a public hearing open for the consideration of, this is where I need paper. For consideration of zoning change application, ZC 22-001. And that's request to rezone proposed Lot 2 Canal Ridge Simple Subdivision from Ram to Commercial. So, with the public hearing open, all those, all those wishing to speak in favor of the application can please come to the podium.
That would be me.
That would be you. Again, this is, we're keeping minutes of this stuff, so it's all, it comes together.
Okay, well, I've kind of stated it before. We just think that the opportunity is, is there. The timing is, you know, getting closer to being right. And it's just nice to have a piece of property that would be appropriate to create some future development for the area. One issue, too, has been the the attempt to rezon prior. And one thing that, that we are doing different from the last attempt, too, was that that was going to be split, the property was going to be split into four pieces, each one, each piece having their own access because there are four access points on the original piece of property that we have. We have agreed with YDOT to give up two of them. So, we have given up, we're giving up two. And we've got one to this little cabin that we have there. And the other will be repositioned to be in a safer spot to access the new, the new lot. So, we feel like we're, we're trying to make it safer.
Questions here?
Yes.
Okay.
In one of these letters, it says you were opposed to this in 2017.
And that was the reason. You know, we, we lived across the, excuse me, we lived across the highway. And, you know, it's, it's not a safe highway in that location. And my issue was, you've got to do something about the access. But I felt like, you know, whatever they wanted to do was fine, as long as it was safe getting on and off.
Quick question I would have also. So, as I understand the situation, you've been in communication with YDOT. If successful tonight, you will start the process to maybe subdivide, subdivide the property and have an engineer design it and have a formal permit application made with YDOT for the access permits? Is that where we go?
It's kind of a process. This is like the very first step in a long process, I think. I, I see it as months or years.
Okay.
What we would do, if this were, if this were rezoned and the Commissioners agreed to the rezoning, then we would come up with a plan of what we wanted to do. And we would try to get local input, input from potentially people in Casper who had an interest in Alcova as well, as to what they would like to see, if anything, on that piece of property. With that information, what we would like to do then is come up with a plan. With that plan, once it was somewhat finalized, we would take that plan to the traffic engineer who is in Cody. There aren't too many in Wyoming, but we've talked to the one in, in Cody. And he's pretty, he seems pretty reliable and really good. He would take that plan and do a traffic study based on the number of people coming in, the type of traffic, et cetera, that that plan would create. Then, once that study was done, they would give that to YDOT. And YDOT would make a recommendation, oh, you have to put a turn lane in, or you have to widen this, or you have to do this. They would do that. So, it's kind of a step up process.
Okay.
Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I would note there's some emails in the packet between staff, Ms. McCardle, and YDOT. And also, we received one more comment on this case. It's the top sheet of paper in the packet coming down to you. The top piece of paper, sorry. And these sheets coming down to you is the additional comment for this case. And the other sheet is for a case coming up on the agenda.
So, we each need to read these, is that what you're saying?
Yes, for this case, the top sheet, the first sheet.
Okay. Did you want to read that? Alright. Anyone, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the zone change application? Please come forward. Anyone else speaking, speak in favor? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the zoning change application? Please come forward. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Josh Black, resident of Alcova and manager of Sloan's General Store. So, I have a letter here from Brian and Jenny, who are the owners of Sloan's General Store. And I'll just read it out. It says, unfortunately, we are unable to attend the planning meeting in person, but as owners of Sloan's General Store and Alcova community members, my wife, which would be my mother and father, would not be in favor of this zoning change. As you all may be aware, several years ago, the previous owners of this exact property were denied a similar request to change zoning. Alcova is very much so a seasonal community. The changing of zoning to Commercial would not benefit the community in any way. There are several businesses that adequately serve the needs of the residents and visitors that come to Alcova to enjoy its beauty and recreation opportunities in the summer months. But as you all know, Wyoming is known for long winters. We do not see any scenario where adding commercial property will enhance the community or the area. Instead, it will add competition and divide the already shallow pool of customers that come to the area. In the winter season, the local businesses already there struggle to survive and keep their doors open in the slow months. To add businesses to the community would increase the chances that more would fail and close their doors, leaving more empty businesses and adding to the blight, and adding blight to the area. There are already several empty and dilapidated businesses, business buildings in Alcova. And as a local, I, I do agree. I live across the highway, actually, from this exact permit. You know, there's, there's no access to it. The highway is dangerous. I mean, the only, the only thing to make it less dangerous is to lower the speed limit, which I don't think is going to happen. And also, I mean, you know, there's a beautiful community park in Alcova that works as a great, you know, location for gatherings and a low pool of employees is, I think, one of the other things we're awfully worried about is business owners out there. There's just not a lot of people to work, especially right now. And more businesses out there would make that even more difficult for, for all of the businesses. So, I guess that's, that's really all I have to say, my thoughts along with Brian and Jenny Black. I'm the manager at Sloan's General Store and they're the owners.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Black. Any questions for Mr. Black? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Yes. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the zone change application? Please come forward.
I have a letter from the Galadrons, the bar Sunset Grill out there. I didn't know who to give it to or when to give it to them.
Would you like to read it to us? Could we get your name and address?
Barbara Fogg.
I'm sorry?
Barbara Fogg. We own the property adjacent to the one that wants to be rezoned. Concerning McCardle, ZC Canal Ridge Commercial rezoning, I feel it necessary to provide more information to the Alcova residents. We would like to know what type of commercial business is in the planning, along with knowing the impact to the existing business community and whether the population will support another like entity. A traffic study for the turnoff should be done as well. To date, there has not been any transparency or notification to the majority of residents. Thank you. Jody Craig, I think, is what it says.
That letter was included in the information packet for this case as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I didn't know she'd send another one. Okay. My husband and I live adjacent to that property. We've lived there for 27 years. So, we know the comings and goings and what goes, what doesn't go on in Alcova. Josh is right. There's, there's, summertime is a joke. The, the road is a mess. There's just people everywhere. Winter, not so much. The highway closes sometimes in the winter because it's miserable. Sometimes there's 18-wheelers backed up clear around toward town. Can be dangerous. Also, last fall, Ms. McCardle called and requested to come visit at our house. She said they had a proposition for us, so she came. And she said they'd like to purchase an easement, the length of our property along the highway fence, and they would put up a privacy fence. And we had not heard of any rezoning or, or anything, so we, she said something about not getting an easement off of the highway. Of course, at that point, that's kind of close to our home. We didn't really want an easement there and/or a fence. I haven't, we haven't heard from them since, after visiting with several of the people in the community. And we don't know. We heard they wanted to put a strip mall at Alcova. We heard all kinds of different stories. I am definitely opposed to a strip mall. I don't want to, if, I lived in Casper for five years. I moved to Alcova for a reason. Don't want to live next door to a strip mall. And even if that isn't it, I, I don't know, we have two motels. We have a gas station. We have a post office. We have everything we need, including a place where the community can gather for meetings. I'm not sure what purpose it would serve. And I'm not sure why they needed an easement. We haven't had any transparency as far as, from them, about what their plan was. So, how can we make an informed decision as a community? And it seems to me that a meeting with the locals should have been before now. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Fogg? I think we're good, thank you. Anyone else in, in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the zoning change application? Hello?
Hello, my name is Shelby Cluse. I'm an employee, employee at Sloan's. And I know the Blacks personally. In regards to the zone change, I agree with Josh as far as summers being, like, very busy and the wintertime being slower. The highway is very busy and it's not something that I think is going to be easily changed. Something as simple as even just the speed limit being changed has seemed like a very hard thing, like, I believe that we would have to have a lot of different signatures for a petition or something like that in order for something like that to even happen. I believe that's a pretty simple, a pretty simple solution to some problems that have happened. There have been wrecks and other things. It is a dangerous highway. The other thing that has come to mind for me is there is a park. There is a kind of area that we could have possible community, community-like events and stuff like that. There is a church as well, where we could have meetings. There is also a school that has been, I guess, for lack of a better term, decommissioned. It's not, no longer in service. So, repurposing possibly that school for something as far as community, if you were wanting to get something like that. Possibly getting involved with that would be a solution. There are other buildings in the area that could be possibly purchased and turned into such other businesses. But it, as it stands currently, I believe that it would be interfering with a lot of things to do such a project, to rezone this and put buildings here, have an easement and other such things. I am also a resident. I live across the highway. Actually, this little trapezoidal area up here to the left, across the way. That is our property. And pulling out of that property myself, there is a little bit of a highway, of a hill coming off of the highway, and that is very scary sometimes to pull out of. So, but that would be my points that I would like to cover, so.
Questions for Ms. Cluse?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the zoning change application? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, call a close to the public hearing. And time for discussion amongst the county commissioner, or the Planning and Zoning Commissioners of the application and its merits and where we move from here, so. Any discussion?
I've read this statement from Chad Agar, like, three times. And they're making it sound like they can't get a access. But then they say it would have to be engineered. I'm having a hard time with it when we don't know what it's going to be used for.
We're just looking at the zoning change, though, as far as just the zoning change?
Right.
Is that, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And this, the property next to it is commercial as well?
Correct, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. You're only looking at the zoning change. And because they've, we've reviewed the simple subdivision, it's ready. But with the 12-acre lot, it can't remain Ram. But if you look at the allowable uses within Ram- lot, it can't remain RAM. But if you look at the allowable uses within RAM versus commercial, you know, potentially, they could do any, you know, what, I guess they're not proposing anything, but any commercial uses are allowed within RAM as well. I think part of it, too, Ms. McCardle and I have talked about financing. If someone were to come in with a development, having the commercial zoning when they're going to a lender would be more favorable, probably, for their application.
It commercial, then?
Versus RAM.
Another question for staff. Megan, does anything in our current zoning frozen regulations have anything to show anything in Alcova as far as plan or zoning plan?
In the development plan, yes. And I outlined that in your staff report, and, and us also included those pages in your information packet. But you'll see this is, this is within the Alcova Pathfinder Neighborhood Area J, and the recommendations for this area, the land use would be ranching and recreation, and the zoning is RAM and some commercial. So staff feels, you know, that this rezoning request is in line with the development plan. You know, it's commercial next to other commercial within the town center of Alcova where the activity happens. You know, it's not some random parcel out in Nowhereville, I guess you would say. It's adjacent to the highway. And again, they will have to do that traffic study with YDOT. That's, that's a, nothing's a, it's, everything is a no-go until that is completed and YDOT approves their approach.
And the county commissioners, staff, type of any building permit or anything like that?
They, right. We'll have to do a building permit. They'll have to get a zoning certificate to ensure whatever is proposed is in line with commercial zoning. Any future subdivisions will have to be a major subdivision, as they've already done a simple on this property. So there are still many development standards they would have to meet when they do have a development on this property.
Thank you. Any more discussion? If not, the chair would entertain a motion for consideration of the application.
I move that we approve it.
We have a motion for approval of the zoning change application. Do we have a second? A second. All right. We have a motion and a second for approval of zoning change.
ZC 22001.
ZC 22001. That's concerning the Canal Ridge simple subdivision from RAM to commercial. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the application, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we had three ayes, no opposed. The application moves forward to the county commissioners with a due pass recommendation.
What's that date?
Next Tuesday, April 19th. At 5:30 PM will be the hearing with the county commissioners.
Thank you. Moving on. Next item on the agenda is consideration of MS 22-001. That's the Clear Canyon Major Subdivision. Megan, may we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, case number MS 22-001, the Clear Canyon Major Subdivision application. The applicant is Gary Lever, and their agent is WLC Engineering and Surveying, and he is proposing to subdivide 50 acres into fi-
Can she get the mic a little closer?
Sure. Sorry about, sorry about that.
Thank you.
He's proposing to subdivide 50 acres into five lots, each averaging about 10 acres in size. It's located in a portion of Section 28, Township 32 North, Range 79 West, and puts it adjacent to the north side of Circle Drive, approximately a half mile from where Casper Mountain Road changes names to Circle Drive. The current zoning is MR2, Mountain Residential 2, and no zoning change is proposed or required. The minimum lot size for MR2 is five acres, and the property is currently vacant, and it's surrounded by, to the north, Starwallow Number 3 subdivision and a large, larger vacant tract, also zoned MR2. To the south are large vacant tracts zoned MR2 and Urban Ag. And also, to the east, large vacant tracts zoned MR2. In the west is the Aspen subdivision, also zoned MR2. The proposed water source is individual water wells or hauled water, and wastewater would be individual septic systems. And the following planning considerations would apply. The 33 feet of Circle Drive that lies within the subdivision must be dedicated as public right-of-way. They need to submit approved approach permit from County Road and Bridge approving the proposed location for the, locations for the shared access easement. There's also the potential for Circle Drive to become a paved road. If approaches are installed after that time, then the approaches will be required to be paved. They need to submit a report signed by a licensed engineer in accordance with Statute 185306, which addresses the safety and adequacy of the proposed water system, individual private wells for review. They also need to submit a report by a licensed engineer in accordance with the same statute, which addresses safety and adequacy of the proposed sewage disposal system, which would be on lot septics. They need to submit the required percolation tests and information to the Natrona County Health Department. They need to label the topographic elevation lines on the preliminary plat, submit a preliminary disclosure statement for review, submit a copy of any proposed covenants and/or homeowners association documents, and there's various cosmetic changes to the plat. And with that, staff recommends approval of the major subdivision plat upon completion of all planning considerations. And I can answer any questions, and the applicant is in the audience.
Commission, questions for staff on the application? At this time, would the applicant like to come forward and give us their information Mr. Nakbar?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I'm fine. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I'm Keith Nakbar, attorney-at-law, 123 West First Street, Suite 205, Casper, Wyoming, 82601. I am here representing the Lever Group and Gary Lever, the principal of Lever Group, who's here with me. In case there are any questions that come up, he is the applicant. This is a small subdivision. There is a tremendous community demand for rural and mountain lots. This is a five-lot subdivision on Casper Mountain. I would note that these lots are 10 acres in size, which, which is double the minimum lot size in this particular zoning, which I believe is MR2. All of these lots front to a county road, so they have good access. No construction of any additional roads would be necessary. We have made the design of the subdivision such that the number of approaches onto the county road would be limited because each, each pair of lots shares a, an approach. You'll see that on the plat. The property is approximately 75% open meadow, approximately 25% treeed area. So there's plenty of area to build homes without doing a lot of removal of vegetation. The property has a gentle slope with some level areas, and we think that would lend itself to septic systems and wells on each lot. And I want you to keep in mind that these lots are 10 acres, which is a pretty sizable lot size for a subdivision. We believe that the subdivision here is consistent with the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan, Chapter 3, which calls for high-quality future residential development to meet human needs in the Casper Mountain area. We plan a set of covenants to be adopted in the subdivision, which would restrict the kinds of homes and buildings to be erected on the properties, would provide for in-ground sewage disposal. I know one of the concerns that was raised was that there would be a, you know, there were questions about how the sewage disposal would go and whether there would be outhouses, and that's not what we have in mind. The, that's basically an overview of the subdivision. I, I have a few more comments that I'll save for when I speak in favor of the subdivision. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, question, that triangle piece, what I would say would be to the left of the subdivision. It's not marked with any property owners or anything? Is that, will there be access to that?
Let's see.
That's access from a different road coming in.
There is access from a different road?
I believe on the backside.
Yeah, on the backside.
The Aspen subdivision?
Yeah, but it's-
Nature Keys.
Well, no, that's actually, belongs to, I forget his name, that unfortunately lost its way from lander.
Bectol?
Yes.
Jeffrey Bectol?
Yeah, Jeffrey Bectol.
Mr. Nakbar, you mentioned two points of access to Circle Drive for four lots, I believe. And I, well, what, what happens to Lot 5?
That also would have its own access. So there's two, I believe, two points of access that serve four of the lots, and then I believe that fifth lot has an existing access, an existing approach.
Okay, okay.
So it would involve construction of two additional approaches instead of four.
Most of these applications, I'd like to go see them before, but I was kind of expecting several feet of snow up there, so I did not make the trip up. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Nakbar?
Thank you.
Mr. Lever, you have anything to add?
Just, I think that there'll be some, at some point, some nice homes up there. I think it's an area that it's going to be accessible, and we'll do what we need to do for septics. If they need to be engineered, we'll engineer them. At some point, we'll probably have a water well driller drill on one of the parcels. Across the road, there's a well that's approximately 400 feet deep, and they did hit water. So I'm assuming that there probably will be water there also.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Better leave your name and address.
Oh, Gary Lever, 101 East Second Street here in Casper.
Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Any other discussion before we move into the public hearing? Call this public hearing open for the consideration of MS 22-001. That's the Clear Canyon Major Subdivision. All those wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come to the, please come forward to the podium.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, again Keith Nakbar, same address as before. I just wanted to take a moment and address a few of the issues that were raised by the one letter that I saw in the record opposed to the subdivision. Some of the concerns that were raised are issues that really don't pertain to this proceeding. The concern was that this will increase traffic. That's really a function of zoning, as I see it, zoning. I mean, this, we are consistent with zoning in the area. The county has zoned the area and, in its judgment, in an appropriate manner. And this subdivision, in fact, is half of the density of what would be allowed in the zoning. So I think that's important. With regard to the issue of sewage disposal, obviously, we will comply as this property is developed with all of the Health Department regulations and standards. Again, 10-acre lot, so we're not going to be pushed right up against neighbors. And I would also point out the fact that the one party that complained and raised the issue of septic or sewage disposal problems has several lots, I believe four or five lots, all of which are about two and a half acres. So they're one quarter of the size of our lot, and so, our lots. And so we believe that certainly the size of these lots lend themselves to adequate sewage disposal without infringing on neighbors. With regard to, there was a question regarding electricity. That's something we're going to have to leave in the hands of Rocky Mountain Power. They will address the electricity in a manner that they find meets their standards. With regard to water supply, which was another of the issues raised, again, the subdivision process accounts for that. We will have an engineering study, if that's required by law, and make the determination as to whether there is sufficient water for development of properties. But at this point, we're seeking subdivision, and we would ask for a recommendation to pass. Thank you. And I'd be glad to answer any further questions.
Questions for Mr. Nakbar? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I would like to reserve some time for rebuttal if, if that becomes an issue.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to, wishing to speak in favor of the Clear Canyon Major Subdivision application, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Seeing none, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application for the Clear Canyon Major Subdivision, would you please come forward? Anyone in opposition wishing to speak in opposition to the Clear Canyon Major Subdivision, please come forward. Seeing none, call the public hearing closed for consideration of the application. Commissioners, any discussion?
I think he answered everything that I had.
Looks we're cutting dry.
Anything else from staff, Megan?
None. I don't think so.
Okay. All right. The chair would entertain a motion for consideration of the application before us.
I move to pass MS 22-001 Clear Canyon Major Subdivision.
I will second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second for approval of application MS 22-001 Clear Canyon Major Subdivision. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I count a three-zero vote for approval. So your application will be forwarded to the Natrona County Commissioners for their April 19th, I believe?
No. Our new process will, is that they will complete all their planning considerations and then move forward to the Board of Commissioners.
At some time in-
At some time in the future.
Not yet.
When they're ready. So it's all in their hands now.
Thank you. Moving on. Next item for consideration this evening is MS 22-002. That's the Lodgepole Acres Major Subdivision. Megan, may we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is application MS 22-002, the Lodgepole Acres Major Subdivision application. The applicants are John Korn, Kevin at, is Bottom Rock LLC, and Billy and Suzette Cole. Their agent is Aaron Money with Topographic Surveying. And the applicant is proposing to subdivide approximately 17 acres into three lots, each averaging 5.7 acres in size. And an additional lot from Starwallow Number 7 subdivision is being replatted and increased in size to provide access to this subdivision. It lies within a portion of Section 14, Township 32 North, Range 79 West, which places it on the west side of East End Road, adjacent to the northern boundary of Starwallow Number 7 subdivision. The current zoning is MR2, Mountain Residential 2, and no zoning change is proposed or required. The minimum lot size is five acres. The property is currently vacant, and there is an existing home, excuse me, on Lot 704 of Starwallow Number 7. of Starwallow Number Seven. Uh, it is surrounded to the north by Elkhorn Ranch, uh, in vacant lands. Starwallow Number Seven subdivision to the east are residents on a larger tract and to the west residences and vacant lands on larger tracts, all zoned MR2 as well. Uh, the water source is proposed to be individual water wells or hauled water and individual septic systems proposed for sewage disposal. And the following planning considerations will apply. Uh, they need to revise the title of the plat, uh, throughout the plat and in the dedication language. They need to dedicate North Lodgepole Trail as a 50-foot public right-of-way. Relabel Starwallow, lot 704, Starwallow Number Seven as 704A. They need to submit their report from a licensed engineer addressing safety inadequacy of proposed water supply, as well as their report from a licensed engineer addressing the safety inadequacy of the proposed sewage dispos, disposal systems. Submit their required percolation tests and information to Natrona County Health. North Lodgepole Trail shall be constructed to county subdivision gravel standards. They'll need to submit plans, design drawings, and obtain a permit to construct and all inspections. Submit as-built drawings of North Lodgepole Trail and possibly place a stop sign at the intersection. We need a copy of the plat showing topography of the subdivision. Add five-foot general utility easements on side lot boundary lines and a 10-foot easement along the outside property boundary. Uh, they need to revise some of the dedication language, submit a disclosure statement for review, submit a copy of any proposed covenants and HOA documents. And there are various cosmetic changes and, to the plat, as well as surveying reviews. And the, and finally, uh, submit, if applicable, submit a subdivision improvements agreement for the construction and payment of all or part of the required public improvements, as well as an irrevocable letter of credit in amount not less than 125% of the estimated cost of the unfinished, unfinished improvements. And with that, staff recommends approval of the final plat pending completion of all planning considerations. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions for staff? I have one. So Megan, with the ongoing Casper land use plan, is, is there any applic, or do you identify anything having to do with the application, um, with respect to that ongoing plan?
Um, since the final draft is in, it will be presented to the Planning Commission next month, um, I didn't include any applicable goals, but I would say that the subdivision is in line with the goals of the updated plan, uh, for well-thought-out residential development. You know, this is an extension of an existing subdivision. They're going to have to construct, uh, the cul-de-sac to the new lots. Um, where the density, you know, he's, he's increasing the size, and I was happy to see him working with adjacent property owners to get access to the property, um, to allow them to build the road and go through the existing subdivision. So I do believe it is in line, uh, with the 2004 plan and, as well as the, uh, public draft for the updated mountain plan.
Thank you. Ready to move to public hearing? At this time, we'd like to open the public hearing for consideration of the Lodgepole Acres. It is a major subdivision, right? And I have to go back to the top of the page?
Correct.
Okay, Lodgepole Acres Major Subdivision. Um, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, would you please come forward? Mr. Nakbar, I believe?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Keith R. Nakbar, attorney-at-law, 123 West First, Suite 205, Casper, Wyoming 82601. I am here, uh, on behalf of John Corn Quinn, one of the applicants for this proposed subdivision, uh, and we are requesting that the Planning Commission approve this proposal. Uh, as your staff indicated, this is a small subdivision, really only dividing 17 acres into three lots. One of the, uh, one of the existing Starwallow Number Seven lots, uh, would be actually expanded to take up a part of, of this property that is a, a part of the subdivision. Uh, this is an extension to an existing subdivision. Access is provided, uh, the three lots all meet the zoning requirements, and, uh, it's a pretty straightforward subdivision. Access, uh, is over this road that would be constructed, and, uh, I think that, uh, all of the subdivision requirements will address any concerns that, uh, may be raised by any opponents, including water, electricity, and sewer. Thank you. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Nakbar? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the Lodgepole Acres Major Subdivision application? Please come forward.
Yes.
Hello, sir?
I'm, I'm Bill Cole. Glad to meet you guys. I'm not very good at speaking in front of everybody, but.
You're doing fine.
I, uh, I think it'll be, you know, fine to have everybody up there. If they, uh, if anything, it might help with fire control, be a few more people maybe to thin up, thin little trees and stuff like that. And they might also help with, uh, the main, the road that we have, maybe to, uh, help do some plowing in, in the wintertime and keep it open for everybody. That's basically it, so I'm in favor of it.
Would you please provide your, please give us your address?
8957 Lodgepole.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Cole? Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward? Seeing none, anyone else?
Can I just ask a few questions without being in favor or opposed?
Absolutely.
I didn't hear that on the last one, only opposed or for. My name is Deborah Bean, and, um, we have a place at 2340 Lodgepole, there on Casper When you were reading the description, it was like one great big sentence, because you knew what you were saying and talking about.
Sorry.
And we weren't getting it.
Okay.
It wasn't divided that we could catch it, you know? And we have one person that couldn't hear, but I think, do you still have the hearing aid things available if a person has hard hearing at a meeting?
I believe so.
That they could, okay. So he can do that next time. Did I hear you say that this is going to be a part of Starwallow Seven?
No, only, so lot 704 of Starwallow Number Seven is increasing in size to 5.11 acres.
And what was that number again, seven?
Lot 704, Mr. Cole's lot. Um, so part of, a part of his lot is being utilized for the right-of-way, uh, for the extension of North Lodgepole Trail. And then with that, uh, the applicant has, is selling him a portion of the proposed, where the subdivision will lie. So Starwallow, uh, lot 704 of Starwallow Number Seven is increasing in size, but still remaining titled within Starwallow Number Seven, on the same plat.
And that's allowed within the subdivision rules, regulations, that sort of thing?
Correct.
You can, you can sell your land to make another subdivision within a sub, that subdivision?
Well, the three lots will, three lot, one, lots one, two, and three will be Lodgepole Acres, and then a portion of the property that's being used to create Lodgepole, so acres will be sold to Mr. Cole, and his lot will become bigger, larger in size.
So he's exchanging?
Access for a larger lot.
So in other words, he's taking his lot within Starwallow Seven?
And making it bigger.
Making it bigger.
Adding.
And that, that is allowed under Starwallow Seven rules and regulations?
I did not see anything in the covenants that disallowed it. He's in, because he's just adding property to his parcel. He's not adding another parcel to Starwallow Number Seven, he's just making his existing parcel within it larger.
Because I was thinking, how do you, how do you expand a subdivision when it has known boundaries already established? And have never heard of that before, so I was, I'm a little confused how you do that. Is it a land swap kind of thing, or how's it work?
I guess it's, it's just he's taking his lot within that subdivision and purchasing land from, uh, the applicants here and making his parcel bigger. Do we have the plat in the PowerPoint, Holly? No.
He's purchasing land from them.
And adding.
In order that they may have access to that property to make a subdivision of their own.
Correct.
What does that make the gentleman's lot size of solid land?
So currently, his lot is, just a second, let me get there.
Thank you.
Holly, am I close? Just one second, let me pull it up on my map here. There we go.
And maybe, you know, um, did I hear that they, the developers are going to do work on Lodgepole Road? From any wear and tear on it that comes from driving that heavy machinery in and out that one lane area?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can answer the questions?
Yes.
So the existing lot 704 in Starwallow Number Seven is 2.51 acres, and it will increase to 5.11 acres in size, so it'll double in size essentially. And the subdivision regulations right now don't require any improvements to, not adjacent to the subdivision, so we can't, we are not requiring any improvements to South Lodgepole, um, as it exits out to the, uh, uh, Main Road, which is, I'm not familiar with it yet. Yes, East End.
Would you repeat that again, please? What was about?
Uh, that the subdivision regulations do not require any improvements to what would be, is labeled on your plat as South Lodgepole.
Yeah.
As it exits out to East End Road. He will, however, have to construct two county road standards, the cul-de-sac, that will be called North Lodgepole Trail.
So the only road from East End Road into Starwallow Seven that the residents there now use is going to be the major road for all of that heavy equipment, all of the trucks lugging, building materials and all of that in, and no improvement done after any damage were to be done to it?
You know, is, South Lodgepole is a public road. Um, I don't believe that there's an Improvement Service or Road District up there, um, but as staff, we always encourage everybody and the developer to talk to the neighbors about participating and helping to maintain the road, and, you know, if there's any damage from contractors or the like, that they'll help repair the road and bring it back to the way it was when they began.
So that subdivision didn't have a requirement that the lots had to be five-acre lots?
It does, and all of the lots are five acres or larger.
Did you not just say that his is 2.51 acres?
His currently is 2.51.
So?
It does not meet the MR2 zoning, but with this re-subdivision, his, Mr. Cole's lot will meet the zoning.
Well, no, what I'm asking is, so he was able to buy a lot in Starwallow Seven that is under the required five-acre parcel size, correct?
Uh, it appears that all the lots in Starwallow are under five acres in size, and have been since the plat was recorded.
Dead, so it's a grandfather thing?
Correct.
That wasn't?
It wasn't a regulation at the time.
Correct. Okay. And roadwork, you say, would be between the developer and maybe? Um, my other question is, we live right by there, right by there, and we were not given a notice of this, and I'm wondering why not? And the only answer I heard one time was that, well, you don't live close enough.
I.
That you have to live within a certain distance, and it's like, but I can see that road right from my front yard up there. And we were not even notified that, that any of this was, so I'm kind of curious to know what are the distances that require residents of the subdivision Starwallow Seven to be notified?
I'll leave that up to staff.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, so currently, um, we are notifying everyone adjacent to the subject property. So anyone who had property that touches this parcel was sent a notification, and then there was also a publication in the newspaper, um, by the county for this public hearing, as well as by the applicant, uh, providing notice of their intent to subdivide. Um, we are looking at, we are revising our notification requirements, um, to be anything within 1,000 feet excluding right-of-way of subject property, but currently, uh, it's only those adjacent to the property. And the list of who is notified was included in your information packet.
So only if my property touches his directly?
Was.
Even though I'm 50 feet away? And it's my neighborhood and the dirt blowing and all this, that and the other, I, I don't get notified to be appraised of it?
Under our current rules, no. We're, we are, we are going to revise those in the near future as we adopt our new regulations, to be 1,000 feet. So under the new regulations, you probably would receive a letter. If you're within 50 feet of his, of an adjacent parcel.
So when Mr. Cole's lot size is increased in size for this, will it be reregistered with the county? That the size of that lot is changed?
Yes, the, it, it will be on the plat, and it will be known as lot 704A of Starwallow Seven.
His 2.5, his 704 will change to 704A? And this is, this procedure is something that has always been available to all of us, then?
Correct. If, if somebody was to buy, you know, want to buy a piece of land from, you know, say this wasn't being developed and someone along the edge wanted to buy an extra two and a half acres and make their lot bigger, they could do so. Uh, if somebody bought two lots within Starwallow Number Seven and wanted to build, you know, say their house would perfectly fit right where the lot line was, they could combine those two lots. Um, so yes, increasing the lot size is allowed, and, uh, I believe staff's recommendation would be favorable in all cases to bring the lots in compliance with the MR2 zoning. So making the lot bigger is always good if it's bringing them into compliance with our zoning.
I just was not aware of that procedure. Okay, size.
Ms. Bean, do you have any other questions for us?
Nope, that'll be it. Thank you.
Thank, any questions for her? Thank you. Where were we? Opposition?
Yes, you're still in public hearing.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Please come to the podium. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we close the public hearing and move into the consideration, uh, among the, um, Planning and Zoning Commissioners. So gentlemen, any discussion?
The road, Lodgepole Roads, I've got Lodgepole Roads, are they, uh, they're not county roads?
They are not, they're subdivision roads, public subdivision roads.
Is there any rules in there on the people maintaining the road?
Uh, I, that's, I mean, it's, it's a standard within counties. Counties maintain their, their roads designated as county roads to the best of their ability, uh, but their other roads, so designated public, uh, as in Starwallow Number Seven, are public roads, meaning anyone can drive on them, but the people that live on them or utilize them aren't responsible for the maintenance. The county offers district support grants if a road district or an improvement service district is formed, um, and they assess themselves and can come to the county for grants for, uh, road improvement projects, um, if they so desire.
Is there anything in their covenants is about the road?
I can't recall. I should have put the covenants for Starwallow in your packet, I apologize for that, but I don't recall anything in the Starwallow covenants.
Do they have a service and improvements district?
They do not.
To follow up Mr. Grant's question, I seem to recall the county commissioners doing away with the requirement that Improvement Service District be formed for major subdivisions.
Correct.
Just recently, last couple of months?
Yes, you all, I believe, last fall, just before I came, removed that requirement from your regulations.
Okay.
I guess I'd like to see something in there about road maintenance, especially during construction times and stuff.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Zill, I will have, ensure that something is in the disclosure statement regarding road maintenance and who's responsible for road maintenance. Unfortunately, and I've come across this multiple times, using public roads and going back, extending them, while we like the, you know, the county likes to see the connectivity, we don't want lots of dead-end cul-de-sac roads. We don't have anything in the regulations right now, such as, you know, an impact fee or a payment to a subdivision or district for costs related to road damage. You know, it's definitely something that the commission could discuss in the future and possibly propose a rule to the Board of Commissioners, however, right now, we don't have anything like that in our regulations to require that.
Any other questions? Question I have for staff. You know, going back to previous applications we've had on the mountain, and I know we just got finished going through the, the previous application, but Casper Mountain Fire District, have they been notified? Did we get anything from them on this?
Uh, we did not get anything from them, and I know they're going through a bit of a change right now. Our building official is working with the retiring board members and some of the folks still up there, as well as the county fire, to try to get them reorganized and get the Fire Wise program going again, as well as helping with, assisting with enforcement and encouraging people on the mountain when they develop. The MR2 zoning has, right now, it's an overlay, it'll just be included in the MR2 district with the zoning update, but the requirements that the county has for development in the MR2 to meet those Fire Wise guidelines, clearing of, around the homes and the other requirements.
So I guess my point is that I would just feel the application more complete as it goes to the county commissioners to have correspondence from the fire district with respect to the application.
We can secure that prior to BOCC.
And I know it's kind of out of order, but the previous application as well for Circle Drive, I think we should do that as well. I don't know why I didn't think of it then.
That, Mr. Chairman, that, that's good, and good for Holly and I, too. We're developing our review committee list, so, fire district, thank you.
Any other discussion on the application? Chairman would entertain a motion for consideration of the Lodgepole Acres Major Subdivision. Good point. Thank you. Mr. Nakbar?
We promised you some rebuttal time, and I was just reminded that I had zoomed right past that.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Zill. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, a couple things I would point out. One is that if you look at the plat for the subdivision, I think it actually improves fire access. Now, I know we're not fire experts, and I certainly respect and appreciate the idea of having the fire district on the mountain take a look at this and approve, and we'll certainly endeavor to do that before the county commissioners meeting. But, but if you look at the roadway, you're adding a roadway to get to an area that otherwise might be, have limited access, so I think it does improve fire access. And with regard to the concerns about the road, certainly that could be a, an addition to the findings of fact, or an addition to the recommendation that if there's any damage done to the existing public road, that those damages be remedied. So I don't think the applicant would have any objection to that. Thank you. Any questions?
That cul-de-sac, what's the, is that an 80-foot cul-de-sac?
Fifty-five is what I read. Fifty-five foot radius.
I left my plat back.
Because that's, that's a question for the fire department, what they could make that turn.
Correct, it has adequate turnaround for the fire.
And I believe that's in the subdivision regulations, isn't it?
Correct.
The circumference, or the diameter of the...
The radius for the cul-de-sac, yes, per fire code.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Nakbar?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else I forgot? All right.
I had a question.
Ms. Bean, please.
I didn't, I wanted to visit with him. I heard you say, at the very beginning, when we were talking about the fire danger or improvements, did you say in a otherwise unused area? I didn't quite catch how you described it.
Mr. Nakbar?
As having the fire department come in...
If you'd like to come forward, that'd be fine.
Yeah, and work in there. I didn't quite know how you meant that.
Sure. The point I was trying to make was that adding this road, to adding the road to the back of these lots, actually, I believe, improves access to this area, which might otherwise not be very accessible.
There's nothing there. There's nothing back there.
I understand that, but if there were a wildfire, you could access these lots over this roadway, which doesn't currently exist.
Rather than the road that comes right down here and goes right into it.
Well, it provides another route of access.
A no. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I wasn't quite sure, it's like, thank you.
You're welcome. The chair would entertain a motion for consideration of the Lodgepole Acres Major Subdivision.
Um, if we accept it? Hey, Matt, uh, I'm sorry.
Just Lodgepole binds close enough?
Lodgepole, Major Subdivision.
With, um...
With the conditions, maybe in place?
Fire district, um...
Fire districts.
Comments, and road maintenance, a road...
Would you like to add a planning consideration that any road damage that occurs on South Lodgepole during construction of North Lodgepole?
That would make me feel better.
Okay.
Two conditions in.
So comment, review by the fire district, and staff will ensure that, and also, any damage, the developer shall address any damages which occur to South Lodgepole during construction of North Lodgepole Trail.
Thank you.
And excuse me, Mr. Chair, it would probably be reasonable to add caused by the developer.
There we go.
The damage caused by the developer.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, on to the vote. All in favor of the motion and the second to approve Lodgepole Acres Major Subdivision as presented in the staff report and subject to the two, um...
Additional...
Conditions, signify by saying aye. Aye. Hearing all ayes, there's no oppose? Thank you. Moving ahead in the agenda, the next item for consideration this evening is MS 22-003, that is a re-subdivision of Lot 19, Bypass Industrial Park. May we have a staff report, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this is case number MS 22-003, the re-subdivision of Lot 19, Bypass Industrial Park. The applicants are Hunting Energy Services LLC, and their agent is Mr. Bill Feringer from CEPI Inc., and they are proposing to subdivide an existing 19.5 acre lot into two lots, one 9.61 acres in size, the other 9.89 acres in size. It is the currently zoned LI Light Industrial, and the proposed re-subdivision meets the LI minimum lot size, which is two acres without public water and sewer, or half acre without either public water or sewer. There's an existing industrial shop and associated infrastructure on proposed Lot 2. The water source will be Wardwell Water and Sewer District, as well as wastewater, and the following planning considerations shall apply. They needed to revise the title of the plat throughout and in the dedication language, verify the record owner of the parcel, and correct ownership across the base of the plat. I'm going to skip three and come back to that. Provide a five-foot general utility easement on each side of the interior lot lines, some cosmetic changes to the plat, and number three, the proposed subdivision, again, lies within Wardwell Water and Sewer. We received correspondence from the district that they agreed to provide sewer services to the new lot. However, they've had some review by the Wyoming Rural Water Association, and I believe I passed correspondence down earlier, that second page was an email from the district, and there is a sewer stub, so the mainline extension is not needed, however, to verify the stub, and Bill can correct me if I'm wrong, describing this wrong, but the line needs to be excavated because they believe it's too close to a water line, and the line may need to be cased. I spoke with the district, and they are okay with waiting until the lot is sold, and the developer, whoever purchases the lot, is going to be responsible for the work needed to utilize the sewer service. So, number three is no longer a planning consideration, and nine and 10 will not be applicable, as there will be no public infrastructure improvements needed for the subdivision. So I guess to summarize what I said, the district is okay, is, has provided their approval of the plat, and they will work with the purchaser of proposed Lot 1 at such time that they're ready to develop that lot. And with that, staff recommends approval of the re-subdivision upon completion of all the planning considerations. And I can answer any questions, and the agent is in the audience.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions for staff? Megan, I guess I have a comment. So, this big wad of paper here that you passed down, I'm not sure what to read, and it's kind of cumbersome to read it while we've got all these people waiting.
Yes.
And we've never seen this before, so...
Uh, no, and I apologize, it is the correspondence going back and forth with the district was just occurring even up till this afternoon, because they had the line scoped just the other day, so... But essentially, it would be the email from Gloria Brainerd dated today, and she, I'll just read it for the record. I think the district, I, staff said, unless we require a letter of credit and subdivision improvements agreement, once the plat, once the plat is recorded, the county will not have any enforceable action to take against anyone who purchases the lot. It would be the responsibility of the district to ensure the new lot owner complies with all the requirements to utilize the sewer service, excavation, casing the line, et cetera. If the district thinks they are okay with enforcing the requirements at time of development, we can go that route and recommend approval of the plat moving forward. And then she said, I think the district can make note of it, so that when they decide to put up a building, it will be mandatory they dig up the sewer to verify that it is or is not encased. If this will work for the county, please go ahead with the subdividing of the property. Much easier than trying to sort papers.
So as long as, as long as the applicant's aware of all those...
Correct, and, and we can put a note on the plat face for any future purchaser to know that there's some additional work to utilize the sewer service that is in fact in the right-of-way, just the district wants the verification about casing of the sewer line.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, questions for us?
No, I think you could do it.
Would the applicant or their agent like to come up and shed some more light on the application, please? Mr. Feringer?
Good evening, Bill Feringer, CEPI, 6080 Enterprise Drive. Thank you. Everything Megan said is exactly right on the button, so just go ahead and move with that.
Okay.
The, the sewer service that is in question, when, when we were splitting this lot, there was question as to whether or not there was even a sewer service in there. We found the water service, found the curb stop, everything on that parcel, but there was question as to whether there was a sewer service to that parcel. And so the representative for the buyer, I believe, Mr. Randy Hall, who couldn't be here tonight because of medical issues, but they hired ISCO Construction to come out and soft dig, looking for the sewer service, which we did finally find the sewer service in the, in the right-of-way. So it was there. The district also asked rural, the Wardwell Water and Sewer District also asked the rural water system to come in and camera the, the existing sewer line, and to verify that it was hooked up, and there is a, you know, a connection there and there. And as a result of that camera going down there, the rural water, in their report, said basically that the sewer service crosses the existing water line that's in the same street, which, you know, Mr. Hutchinson, that happens all the time. So their, their comment was that there's a potential that, that may not meet the required vertical separation between water and a sewer line crossing. I, I don't know that that's, that's really a concern, because the sewer line manhole is 10 feet deep, and so the sewer service, the sewer service measured in the right-of-way was almost eight and a half feet deep, eight foot, three inches, is what I was told. And so, I think, I think the, the vertical separation is probably there, but the district, Wardwell Water District, has agreed that they'll take that up with whoever purchases that lot and decides to develop it.
What size lines are we talking about? Are we talking about service lines, or?
Yeah, it's a service line. A service line, yeah, four-inch service line that crosses the eight-inch water line.
Okay.
And so, so yeah, so the district accepted all of that, and, and said that they would make a note in their own records that whenever that lot is looked at being developed, it may be the, the requirement of that purchaser to verify it, and, and make sure that that's, that the, the vertical separation is there. So, all that aside, this, this parcel, this almost 20-acre parcel, was owned by Hunting Energy, who had a big operation going there up until almost a year ago. They closed up and moved out, and this building has been vacant since last June, 65,000 square foot building. And so, we're dividing this lot, so that we've got a couple of local business owners that are looking to purchase this and, and then put it back into operation of another business in there. So, it's a, you know, very worthwhile and, and venture on their part, so we would like to see the subdivision approved tonight and move on to the commission.
Okay.
So, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Questions for Mr. Feringer?
I have an associated question that has to do with Wardwell Water and Sewer District, and I've read, um, things in, recently, last couple of months, about Wardwell, Wardwell Water and Sewer District, and, and it's continuing to do operation. Are you familiar with that?
I, I'm familiar that there's been discussion between Mills, Bar Nun, Wardwell, and the commissioners about that, but I'm not sure where it's at in that, in the process.
Okay, can, can we be assured that if there is such dissolution, dissolution, that this detail is something that gets picked up in the...
And like Megan said, we, we will put a note on the plat.
Okay, great.
To, to kind of follow up on that, so that...
Okay.
That's out there, and it's not just... That's out there and it's not just written on some yellow sticky note in the Wardwell office.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
With that, we'll move ahead for the public hearing. So I call a public hearing open for consideration of.
MS twenty-two.
Application MS twenty-two dash zero zero three, that's re-subdivision of Bypass Industrial Park. So, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of, would you please come forward?
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is William DeVore. Um, my partner Fred DeVore is in the back in the seats. Um, we're the proposed purchasing group of that subdivided land. Excuse me. Uh, Fred and I own Peterbilt of Wyoming. We're a seventy-two-year-old company in the state of Wyoming, family-owned. We've been operating in Mills, Wyoming for nearly sixty-six years. We have thirty-two employees and we sell service and sell parts to Peterbilt trucks. Uh, we see this as a great opportunity to continue to keep employment in Wyoming, keep it in Neptuna County in, in particular. And, uh, we're super excited about the prospect of moving on to that. We don't need twenty acres, we need roughly ten in the subdivision, but we're certainly speaking in favor of this subdivision. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. DeVore? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I do. Sounds like you're gonna move your business to that.
Yes, we're gonna move Peterbilt Wy- of Wyoming wholly up to their, from Mills.
And take that Hunting Energy building?
Yeah, that'll be our new truck shop.
Good.
So, no vacant building and.
AC empty buildings.
Oh, we do too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to MS twenty-two dash zero zero three, re-subdivision of Bypass Industrial Park? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to it, please come forward. Seeing none, call the public hearing closed. Your discussion amongst us, planning and zoning commissioners. Mr. Zeal, you have something?
I think it's a good deal.
Okay. Mr. Grant, you're good? Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of the application.
I move to pass the resolution MS two-two dash zero zero three, Bypass Industrial Park.
Go ahead.
I second.
Okay, so I was just gonna make a side comment, you were moving to pass the bypass. Don't put that in the minutes, please. All right, so we have a motion and a second to, for, um, approval of re-subdivision of lot nineteen, Bypass Industrial Park. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor, no oppose? The application moves forward to the Board of County Commissioners? And I don't know that date on that, is that also, uh, depending on the applicant?
Uh, yes, I believe, yeah, it's pending completion of all their planning considerations.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, I believe, close to last.
Almost.
Consideration of twenty-two dash zero one T A subdivision regulation amendments. May we have staff report, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, staff has been reviewing the twenty-thirteen subdivision regulations of Neptuna County and we are anticipating a full rewrite of the regulations later, uh, this year. Some requirements of the regulations were noted by staff as needing amended immediately, uh, with the intent to reduce regulatory and budgetary burdens on the county. Uh, staff has amended certain sections of the regulations related to public notice requirements. Several sections of the regulations were placing the burden of publication on the county as well as requiring a longer notice period than required by the, by Wyoming State statute. Uh, I've included a table in your packet proposing, um, amen, with the proposed amendments in their descriptions. Um, the proposed amendments will be placed on the county website as well as outreach to interested stakeholders in the community. Um, per State statute, the Planning Commission shall review, review and recommend amendments to the subdivision regulations for the approval of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, and with that, staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the Board of County Commissioners uh, so that they may put it out for a forty-five-day public comment period. And I guess I will, I can quickly go over the summary.
Please do, there's a lot of information, information there.
Yes, so.
May I ask a question first?
Sure.
Is this the same, is this part of the process that Commissioner Gutierrez has been taking part of? Taking part in?
No, he is part of the steering committee for the zoning regulations.
So this has nothing to do with that?
No, this is for the subdivision regulations.
Okay.
Um, first, uh, public notice requirements for preliminary and final plats in mobile home parks. Uh, we're making changes to the language for publishing notices of intent to subdivide. And we're going to, uh, have the applicant publish their notice of intent to subdivide to include the date of the Planning Commission public hearing. Um, the reason for this would be to shift responsibility and cost of publication to the applicant instead of the county, um, and reduce requirements, regulations which are not required per Wyoming State statute. Um, we're going to amend chapter two, section two regarding public hearings and notice requirements for the Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. Again, shift for publication and notice requirements onto the applicant. And finally, uh, we made some minor revisions to language regarding submittal deadlines throughout, uh, the regulations and revisions to the language requiring landowner association entities for subdivision infrastructure maintenance. And those were to reduce regulation text and add clarity and streamline the subdivision application and review processes.
So a quick question on the third bullet that you had there. Is that a follow-up to the Improvement in Service District?
Yeah, yes.
Thing we were talking about earlier?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just noticed some language still in the regulations. Um, under chapter four, section five, print eight, it was documentation satisfactory to the Board of County Commissioners that the improvement in service district requirements have been met, uh, which is no longer required. So we just changed it to documentation satisfactory to the B O C C that an improvement in service district homeowners or landowner association or the equivalent has been formed to provide for the maintenance of subdivision roads and other infrastructure. And to meet that requirement, uh, I would say staff would just like to see draft, uh, landowners association or homeowners association documents so that when people move into that subdivision, you know, their, the documents are there for them to, to operate under and they don't have to put those together themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Doesn't the, the county have records of subdivision covenants?
Uh, re- correct, so any HOA docs or covenants, I encourage, uh, applicants to include those. Uh, give the final original copies to staff and we'll record those with the plat so they're all recorded at the same time. But anybody can find, yeah, their HOA docs and covenants down in the land records.
And interchange those, you have to, if you have to come here, does he agree to do that?
Uh, no, generally not. Um, usually covenants, uh, or bylaw, HOA bylaws have, um, describe a mechanism within them of a number of, certain number of landowners votes that need to happen to amend them. But they're, they do usually outline a process to do that.
They have to be recorded to the county.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff on the question changes?
Yeah, I'm, are we supposed to be a or n to this, or? I guess I'm not sure where we should stand on these.
Yes, the staff is asking for a motion to recommend approval of the proposed subdivision regulation amendments to the Board of County Commissioners. And then from there, uh, we will take the proposed amendments and the county commissioners will put them out for a forty-five-day public comment period, um, per the Wyoming Administrative Procedures Act, uh, for writing, writing rules or amending our rules. And then after that forty-five-day public comment period, uh, they'll hold a public hearing prior to adopting or not adopting them.
So if we, if we vote for this, that don't mean it's gonna go through until after the forty-five day.
Correct.
Through the commissioners.
Yes.
I read through it pretty good.
And as I read through it, I, I, I sense, uh, um, that we have a new, um, planning director who has some insight on things that perhaps we just didn't have before. And you're bringing that insight to the, to the county and, uh, I think it's a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further, any further questions for staff? I guess we need to have a public hearing on this as well, don't we?
I don't think.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's required.
Okay. All right, with that, staff, uh, or, um, the chair would entertain a motion for consideration of the subdivision regulation amendments as presented to us this evening, T A twenty-two dash zero zero one.
I move that we pass T A twenty-two, twenty, T A two-two dash zero zero one.
As presented.
Subdivision regulation as presented.
Okay.
I second the motion.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion and second, please signify by saying aye. Aye? None opposed? Votes three in favor, zero opposed. Moves forward for the county commissioner consideration and public here, public notice and what, and the details that Megan mentioned. All right, last on the agenda. And the gentlemen in the back have been waiting through, waiting patiently through this. I'm, I'm guessing that they're part of this. Old Business twenty-two dash zero one conditional use permit. This was tabled, request for a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot-tall monopole for a wireless communication facility, uh, west of town. So.
Shelley and Sarah, are you still there? Ah, sorry about that.
Okay, we'll see how this works.
So Megan, may we have a staff report, please?
Uh, yes, do we need to make a motion to remove it from the table?
Chair would entertain a motion to remove the item from the table from last month.
I move that we remove C U, the cup twenty-two zero zero one from the table.
A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Mills, may we have a report, please?
Yes, now we may have the staff report. Uh, this is case number twenty-two point oh-one C U P, uh, conditional use permit request from Everest Infrastructure Partners LLC for a, uh, one-hundred-and-fifty-foot-tall monopole and associated ground mounted telecommunications equipment within a fifty-by-fifty fenced lease area on lot seven of West Gate Park Three, also known as fifteen-seventy-five Derrick Drive, uh, which puts it in West Gate Park Three Industrial Park on the east side of Six Mile Road and the north side of Derrick Drive. It is currently zoned L I light industrial and there's an existing shop building on the parcel. Um, again, this was tabled last month by the commission, um, with a request for the applicants to, uh, bring additional information. Uh, and those additional considerations were to provide a letter of consent for the tower from the Neptuna County International Airport, uh, submit letters of consent from each adjacent landowner who would be affected if the tower were to fall within the hundred-and-ten percent setback, and submit a revised letter from the engineer providing additional safety data and a statement regarding the failure rate of towers and its likelihood of falling within the lease area. Included in your information packet is correspondence from the airport stating that they are okay with the tower. And with that, staff still recommends approval of the conditional use permit. And I will let, uh, share, the applicants, uh, address, uh, the other considerations and any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, so the ladies on the.
They are there, yes.
Okay, um, may we have an applicant's, um, update or report, please?
Um, yes, you may. This is Sarah Neese. And do you, would you all like my address?
Please.
Okay, um, so it's gonna be ninety-one twenty Dock Bar Court. That's in Elk Grove, California. Um, you know what, I have my list here, I'm just gonna wait a second, I'm so sorry.
Nine, five, six, two, four.
Thank you. Um, okay, so this is Sarah and I will speak to the, uh, potential concerns that the, um, commissioners had in the past and our efforts to address those concerns. Um, as Megan explained, we are requesting, um, exception or sort of variance from the hundred-and-ten percent setbacks. Um, we're proposing to locate sixty-three feet from the north parcel boundary and eighty feet to the west parcel boundary. That does, um, you know, could impact two parcels. There are two parcels that, uh, we were, uh, asked to try and get their consent. Um, these, these parcels are essentially, as far as we can tell, owned by the same company. They're under different entity names, but it seems to be the same business, same mailing address. Um, and we have tried at length to contact these parcel owners with zero success. Uh, we've sent letters in the past. I know they've been noticed twice by the planning department. Um, and then we sent certified UPS, uh, shipping, you know, uh, shipment with a letter asking them to consent to the project or at least review it and contact us if they had concerns. We attached drawings and everything, you know, explaining the setbacks and we have not, um, gotten a response from the adjacent parcel owners. We also called them, um, it's tough to find the phone number, but the senior planner Megan found us a phone number associated with the neighboring parcels. And I kept a call log and I've tried to call, nobody answers the phone. Um, the phone just rings and rings, there's no voicemail. Um, so we, you know, we feel that we've done what we can, um, but we can't get ahold of these parcels. The, um, the whole business park obviously is, is zoned industrial and there's no structures there or anything. There's not a structure on either parcel that would be, uh, even within, kind of anywhere within the hundred-and-ten percent setback, um, radius. Uh, the nearest building is three-hundred, over three-hundred feet away to the north and it's, it's a, I think it's a office, there's no, you know, nothing residential or anything like that. Um, but we recognize that there are, you know, potential setback concerns. So in addition to trying to contact these parcel owners, you know, we also, from the beginning, have proposed designing the tower, um, with breakpoint technology so that it will collapse upon itself, um, in the highly unlikely event of collapse, uh, rather than cro- you know, falling straight down and crossing over a parcel boundary. So we went ahead and ordered tower engineering. Uh, it's pretty unusual for us to do this at this stage, but we did it to do the best that we can here to demonstrate to you all, um, that this thing is gonna be safe. So we, we did submit, uh, tower engineering report. Um, it basically gives the, kind of, engineering, the profile of the tower that we're ordering and the calculations, um, with the structural loading. And I can just do a really quick summary here. Um, I don't know if you guys have it in front of you or not, but I can certainly summarize what's going on in this report. Um, so essentially, the tower will be designed to hold the equipment of four carriers, right? So we're trying to bring, you know, A T and T, Verizon, everybody onto this one tower, uh, to increase coverage for Neptuna County and reduce the number of overall towers. And this report has designed each carrier's rad center, so their antenna section of the tower, um, to hold eight thousand pounds at the top two rads and then seven thousand pounds at the bottom two rads. So just for your reference, the average car weighs approximately four thousand pounds. And this thing is, you know, designed to withstand, uh, fifteen plus, thirty-one thousand, uh, pounds of loading, which is way more than we're ever gonna put on it. Um, it's designed to withstand those, that loading at a hundred-and-eight miles per hour wind without ice, if there's ice, right, in the event of hail or frozen. there's ice, right, in the event of hail or frozen, you know, snow, it would be designed to withstand ice at 50 miles per hour winds. It's designed, we've got it certified on here, that, you know, the tower's going to be designed to meet or exceed the requirements of the 2021 International Building Code, which again, we do supply all of that information and have to, you know, verify to the building department that we're in line with the code in order to get a building permit anyway, of course. So the tower has a structural rating of 97.9%, which is passing by any, any standard. I mean, you know, we submit this thing to the building department, they're gonna see this passing structural based on the weight and the wind conditions and, you know, show that this is passing. But in addition to all of that, on the second page of our engineering report, we show two sections of the tower, so this monopole built in sections, right, there's, you know, a piece at the bottom, 47 feet tall, and then, you know, there's a section put on top of that, a section put on top of that until we get to the 150 feet tall tower, and this tower shows two sections called slits, and the slits are the breakpoints. So they're designed to be just a hair weaker than the rest of the pole, so that if we have 200 mile an hour winds and, you know, just an act of God or nature and something happens where this pole's going to collapse, it will break at those two points and fall over on itself rather than down straight across the parcel boundary. So the slip points are at 53 feet in height and 105 feet in height, and again, we're over, you know, 60 and 80 feet away from the parcel boundaries, but either way, the tower's designed to stay within its 50-by-50 lease area, and that's what our report is showing, and we do have this, you know, signed and stamped by a engineer. So that's my, my summary there, we are requesting that the commissioners hopefully recommend approval despite the setbacks because the code said that we could ask for a variance from the setbacks, you know, if we do our due diligence, and that's what we're trying to do here. I think Shelley may want to add a comment for us, and then we'll of course answer any questions that you all have. Shelley, did you want to add anything?
Yes, this is Shelley Nice, address 9120 Dock Bar Court, Elk Grove, California, 95624. I met you all at the last hearing. Sarah and I work in tandem together jointly, and the amazing that I would add, I think she did a very good job of explaining to you the breakpoint technology. One of the things that we saw in your code, when we were looking to locate the site, is the preferred area in which you wanted, and so we tried to identify that in an industrial zone. In addition to doing that, we also tried to have the highest investment use of Mr. Loeb's property. I've talked with Joe Loeb on several occasions, so that he would have the best utilization on his property. But I would also add that the code itself, in the actual code, said that it didn't, I didn't have to look under a separate section to find variance. It said within the code that there were exceptions for a 1 to 110 setback if we could establish that it wasn't a negative impact on a neighboring property. As a result of that, we took that to mean that that was acceptable based on the fact that we could establish that. That would be one very important point for us, that it was not called out separately as a variance, which we would, may have treated it differently had that have been done so. Additionally, because of the location of the facility, and I've located well over a thousand of these over the last 30 years, this was one of the better locations we could find. When I look at those neighboring parcels, when we drove the area and we looked at the neighboring parcels, there was just simply nothing there, it looked like they had some storage, pipes maybe stored there, and so I don't know what the intended future use is, but in trying to reach these property owners, not only, you know, after, we recommended that we do so after our last hearing, but we had tried to reach out to them because they were ideal also to locate a facility on, to no avail. So we've, we've tried repetitively to get ahold of them. I might also note that, I think it was brought up at the last hearing, that, you know, someone should put a residence there, then, you know, if this was in the fall zone, they wouldn't have approved. I might note that it will already have been preexisting, the tower will already be there, and prior to someone purchasing a building or facility on one of those parcels, we would be a preexisting tower, and so perhaps that would be more amenable than putting up a tower after a subdivision was built in there. Those are my primary comments. We would, we would kindly request a recommended approval for the facility as it will accommodate four wireless carriers in the area. I did speak with some folks that work in the oil fields there after the last hearing, they said this is a much needed use, they need the coverage, and so I think the safety benefits in the area, surrounding area, with the added wireless coverage would far outweigh the risk of this falling on adjacent property with the breakpoint technology.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd note that the packet that Holly just provided you is the report that Sarah Nice was referencing with the pole on Page 2 and the sections of the tower that are weaker for the breakpoint technology. That was not included in your packet.
Thank you. All right, so a lot of information from the two Nice ladies. Any discussion?
There's an email here from the airport that says they would have to go through the FAA 7460 Notice of Proposed Instruction?
Correct, the, Mr. Januska wanted to confirm that they would go, that they would complete that report, and yes, that's required of all towers located anywhere in the United States, and so the, your packet contains their preliminary FAA information and that the FAA 7460 will be completed prior to construction of the tower.
Refresh my memory if you would, please, Megan. We, we had discussion of the FAA requirements last month, and it seems to me they had already made an application. This is a separate, is that correct? And this is a separate deal?
Yes, so their, their preliminary information for the FAA requirements was provided in your packet last month, but Mr. Chairman, I believe Commissioner Gutierrez asked if the airport had been notified of the tower, and they had not, and so that was added as one of the considerations. And then I'd also note, Mr. Januska and I had a conversation in our current zoning regulations, it states that any permanent buildings or structures greater than 50 feet in height shall be, GPS coordinates, the permanent building or structures is geographic elevation of the construction site, and the planned height of the permanent building or structure above grade, sorry, wrong section, for any permanent buildings or structures greater than 50 feet in height, the Natrona County Building Department shall furnish a copy of the building permit application to the Natrona County International Airport Board of Trustees and Airport Manager. So since he, Commissioner Gutierrez is not here, I'm not sure, but for certain, but I'm, I wondered if this was some of the section that he was recalling in his mind about the notification, but again, it's with a building, at the building permit time, not planning commission, but it behooved us to let it, let them know anyway, just so that they're aware that it's coming in, and again, the email, yes, came back that they did not have any worries about impact to the airport with this tower.
Mr. Januska's email there goes a long way towards satisfying my concern on that item. Another question, since last month, and I know there's a ton of stuff in our packet here with plans and influence areas and whatnot, has anything changed on those plans relating to the 110% rule or anything, or is that the exact same location as we looked at last month?
Correct, they have not proposed to move the tower as of right now, they're still requesting, the same as last month, and to have that allow, allow them to have the reduced setback requirement.
Okay. So I have a question, not to put you on the spot, Charmaine, but I may. We had requested last time that the adjacent property owners be notified and provide verification that the 110% rule was satisfactory with them with, I guess as it turns out, breakpoint technology and whatnot. We heard that multiple efforts were made to contact the adjacent property owners and to no avail. I recall last meeting, mention was made that it's the burden on the applicant to make sure that's done. With what they have done, do you find it satisfactory that the adjacent property owners have been sufficiently notified that we can move forward?
Yes.
I'm gonna go back to the minutes from last month because there's a lot of written, a lot of written there, but there were three things I think were the succinctly what we were asking for. We asked for a letter of consent from the Natrona County Airport. Check. We asked for a letter from the applicant's engineer with definable responsibility in the event of a failure of the structure. So this breakpoint technology, I think, is more explained to us today, that the higher you go, the lesser the, the strength of the different sections of the tower, and they will fall over on themselves, and that makes sense to me. And this stuff that was just handed out right here, I would, you know, in a couple months I get back with you and verify that.
But it is stamped by a licensed engineer, and yes, so they've provided that structural design report to try to meet that, to meet that consider, additional consideration.
Okay, and the third, the third item was consent from the property owner, owners within 110% of the site range approving the application. So we're hearing that we have a legal opinion that the necessary effort has been put in to secure that, apparently to no avail, but there is documentation that the effort has been made. All right, so any more discussion, questions for staff? So I think as we go through a public hearing process just like we did last time, right?
I think since it was tabled, you've had the public hearing, so you don't have to have another public hearing.
Okay. All right, so we can move directly to consideration of the application. First, I guess with the Nice ladies on the phone, any, any more questions for them? Okay.
Well, I got a comment. These gentlemen back there are from Casper, Alcoa Irrigation District, you guys got something to do with this?
No.
Okay.
All right, I'm satisfied. The chair would entertain a motion for?
I move to allow the CUP 22-01 telecommunication tower for move on to the Board of County Commissioners for approval.
A second.
Okay, after a lot of discussion last month and a lot of follow-up information this month, we're ready for a vote. So all those in favor of approval of conditional use permit 22-001, that's the communication tower out west of town, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So there were three ayes, no nays. The recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission is to forward with a due pass recommendation to the county commissioners. I would assume next, the 19?
Uh, I, no, I believe they are scheduled for May 3rd. So Sarah and Shelley, I will get with you in the coming week to prepare for the BOCC meeting.
Okay, we will plan to attend that in person, and I'd like to thank the commissioners for their time this evening.
Thank you for all the extra effort. It's, it's a, it was a different bird as far as we can, we're concerned, and you guys put a lot of effort into it, and we appreciate that, and I think the county commissioners will likewise be impressed with the effort that you guys have put into this.
All right, you bet.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, ladies.
Good evening.
Ooh.
Thank you.
That's tight stuff. All right, so last but, very last but not least, is public comment. Are there anyone, is there anyone in the audience wishing to come up to the Planning and Zoning Commission and provide us with any public comment?
So why are you here?
We're gonna be, try to be involved with some of the subdivisions coming in, as far as the grass moving with irrigation district, we just don't want to be a grass moving field.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll just say we've been working with the irrigation district as we've, as Stat, Holly and I have found that on subdivision application reviews previously, all the review parties that should have been reviewing our plats weren't necessarily getting them, so we've worked to correct a few mistakes, and we have the irrigation district, and we're gonna get the fire district, that was a good suggestion, but getting our application review committee solid and put together so we're ensuring all of our applications are reviewed by the appropriate entities.
That's a brutal assignment to sit there through all this.
James, Jason, Gutierrez, and me, I'm Chad Zill, that brought that to their attention for you guys.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
And off the record, thanks for cleaning my ditch.
All right, hearing no more public comment, chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
A second.
At 7:39 PM, all in favor?
Yeah, it is.
Aye. We are adjourned.